Councilman Ferguson, would you mind doing an invocation, please?
Lord, we thank you for another opportunity to come together to do the business of the city. We ask that your presence be here. We ask for your wisdom, your peace and your direction. We thank you for keeping all those that are here representing their families of the city of Glen Arden and their employees. We ask Father God that our business will be peaceful and that we will accomplish that which we have set out to do. Bless the employees, bless the elected officials, and bless all that are possessed in Jesus' name and amen.
Amen. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Hello, everyone. Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gillian?
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Hairston?
He is not here.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Herring?
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
Thank you. And President Curtis?
Here.
All right, we have six in attendance.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Come on.
Second?
Second.
First, Ms. Ferguson. Second, Mr. Herring. Discussion?
Yes, President Curtis, this is Councilwoman Fareed.
Councilwoman Fareed?
I have one topic to add. The Charter Review Committee. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. Without any other discussion, vote to accept the agenda. Madam Clerk?
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gillian?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Thank you. President Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you. We have six yeses. This has passed.
Thank you. All right.
Point of order, the clerk needs to go back to Councilwoman Ferguson because she passed the first time. She's passed the second time, or she's going to pass again.
No, I said yes.
You said yes, others said pass.
No, thank you.
My audio is off.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Councilman Herring? All right, well, let's get into it then. First, it's the introduction of four resolutions related to things that are already in the budget. But where a resolution is created for the purchase because it exceeds the threshold of the purchasing power by administrative department. So the first one is a resolution to authorize purchase of two police vehicles. And it is not pulling up.
I'm sorry, did you want to share a screen?
It'd be nice to share a screen, but it's just not pulling up at all, so I'll have to go to the Word document for some reason. Madam Clerk, do you have the resolutions?
Oh, yes. Just give me one second. Let me get it pulled up and I'll share my screen.
It's coming up now, sorry.
I do have it if you want me to go ahead and share.
Sure.
Okay. Can you all see that?
Yes, we can. All right, this resolution is for the authorization of purchase of police vehicles, two police vehicles introduced by Council President Curtis, co-sponsor at the request of administration. And it's been introduced in this work session. We'll be voting on it in the regular works, regular meeting next week. Whereas the council has determined that it is in the public interest to authorize the Glen Arden Police Department to purchase vehicles, radios and related items for use by its police officers to increase the public health and safety. And whereas the council has previously approved in the budget, the purchase of police vehicles and equipment to outfit the police officers. Whereas it is necessary to purchase two 2022 police inspector utility all-wheel-drive base vehicles for use by Glen Arden police officers from New Holland Auto Group at a price of $34,995 per vehicle based on the state of Maryland contract for purchase of law enforcement vehicles as per the invoice attached in Exhibit A. And whereas the purchase is authorized without a formal bid process pursuant to Section 818B of the city charter. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in a regular work session this first day of November 2021 as follows. That the purchase of two new 2022 police interceptor utility, I guess I missed it the first time, all-wheel-drive base, base police vehicles from New Holland Auto Group for the total amount of $34,995 per vehicle. Per the proposal attached as Exhibit A to this resolution B, and it is hereby approved. And payment for the police vehicle shall be made from the Capitol Projects Outlay Support Equipment Line number 8367-30-80-10 in a budget. And this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. That is the first resolution for the two police cars. The second resolution is the resolution to authorize purchase of two in-car radios for the vehicle and one portable police radio introduced by Derek Curtis, co-sponsor at the request of administration, introduced in this working session on November 1st. Whereas the city of Glen Arden, Maryland maintains a police department for protection of public health and safety and welfare. Do we switch it?
Sorry, I had the wrong one up. You're on the correct one now, I'm sorry.
Okay. A resolution to authorize purchase of two in-car radios for the vehicle and one portable police radio. Whereas the council has determined that it is in the public interest to authorize the Glen Arden Police Department to purchase two in-car radios and one portable police radio for use by its police officers to increase the public health and safety. And whereas the council has previously approved in the budget, the purchase of police equipment to outfit the police officers. And whereas it is necessary to purchase two 700-800 megahertz single-band APX radios for installation in the two new police vehicles from Motorola Solutions Incorporated at a price of $4,190.55 per radio as per the invoice attached in Exhibit A to its resolution. And whereas it is necessary to purchase the 7800 megahertz APX 600 portable radio with enhanced digital ID and accessories from Motorola Solutions Incorporated for a total sum of $4,231.30 to properly outfit a Glen Arden police officer per invoice attached as Exhibit A to its resolution. And whereas Motorola radios with the proper specifications can be purchased from Motorola Solutions for the same price as obtained under the competitively bid contract with Prince George's County. And whereas the purchase is authorized without a formal bid process pursuant to Section 818B of the city charter. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in the regular work session this first day of November 2021 as follows. That the purchase from Motorola Solutions of two 7800 megahertz APX radios for installation in the new police vehicles from Motorola Solutions for a total amount of $8,381. Per the proposal attached as Exhibit A to its resolution. B, and it is hereby approved. And that the purchase of the Motorola Solutions of a 7800 megahertz APX 600 portable radio with enhanced digital ID and accessories for a total amount of $4,231 per the proposal attached in Exhibit A to this resolution. B, and it is hereby approved. And payment for the police radios and accessories shall be made from the Capitol Projects Outlay Support Equipment Budget Line. And this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Was there another one? And this is to outfit the police vehicles? Okay. Resolution to outfit the police vehicles introduced by Derek Curtis, co-sponsor at the request administration in this introduced in this work session on November 1st, 2021. Whereas the council has determined that it is in the public interest to authorize the Glen Arden Police Department to purchase vehicles related items for use by its police officers to increase the public health and safety. And whereas the council has previously approved in the budget, the purchase of police vehicle equipment to outfit its police officers. And whereas it is necessary to fully outfit the said police vehicles with police lights and sirens, computer capabilities, and to make certain other modifications. The total cost of these modifications for the total price of $37,940.70 as per invoice from Global Public Safety LLC attached as Exhibit A to this resolution. Whereas proper specifications can be purchased from Global Public Inc. for the same price as obtained under competitively bid contract with the Prince George's County. And whereas the prices for the vehicle fit out are based on the state of Maryland and Prince George's County contract for purchase of these services. And whereas the purchase is authorized without a formal bid process pursuant to Section 818B of the city charter. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in work session this first day, November 2021 as follows. For the outfit for the said vehicles with police lights and sirens, computer capabilities, and to make certain other modifications for the total price of $37,940.70 as per invoice from Global Public Safety attached as Exhibit A to this resolution. B, and it is hereby approved. And payment for the outfitting of these vehicles shall be made from the Capitol Projects Outlay Support Equipment Line Item Number 8367-30-80-10 in a budget. And this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. This is the last one. Okay. Resolution to authorize renewal of contract with Axon Enterprise for 20 body-worn cameras for police officers introduced by Derek Curtis, co-sponsor at the request of administration in this work session on November 1st, 2021. Whereas the city of Glen Arden, Maryland maintains a police department for the protection of public health, safety and welfare. And whereas in order to protect the public safety and welfare, the police department must maintain adequate equipment. And whereas the police department is in need of 20 police body-worn cameras to record interactions between police and the public outlined in the Glen Arden Police Department General Order Dash, General Order 18-1 attached here to Exhibit A. And whereas it is in the best interest of the city to renew the service agreement for the continuation of 20 body-worn cameras for the police officers. And whereas the council appropriated funds for the purchase of body-worn cameras in the FYI. We have to fix that. It says FYI, Budget and Support Equipment Police Body Cameras Account Number 10-55-50-8360. And whereas Section 818 Contract Procedures of the city charter requires that the city engage in competitive bidding process for the procurement of goods and services with an estimated cost exceeding $2,000. And now therefore be resolved by the city council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in work session this first day of November 2021. That the mayor or council be and is hereby authorized to sign a contract in the form acceptable to the city attorney with Axon Enterprise Inc. for the purchase of 20 body-worn cameras for $17,320 a year, month, in the total. We have to fix this too. Amount of $51,963 provided that the authorization to enter into said contract and is hereby contingent upon the city's council's authorization. This resolution shall take place immediately upon adoption, of course, with some edits to some language in that resolution, but that will be done. And these resolutions, we post it online for public consumption before the next, for our next meeting next Monday. Councilwoman Gillian, let's see that you're unmuted. Did you have any?
I do. I do have a question and I feel bad because you guys stopped sharing the screen and I didn't want to interrupt your flow. So I don't intend on stopping these resolutions, but I did have a question. If you can go, if Council Clerk or you, Council President, can go to, I believe it was a second resolution, maybe the one that talked about two in-car radios for the vehicles and one portable police radio? That particular one?
Yes, this is the two in-car radios.
Okay, so Michael, and I, again, pardon me for being a newbie here. So if I, for getting it wrong or not. So I'm looking at the one, two, I think it's line number 29.
29, whereas more radios with the proper specifications.
Mm-hmm, so can be purchased from Motorola Solutions for the same price as obtained under a competitively bid contract with Prince George's County, right? And then when we go to 33, it says whereas the purchase is authorized without a formal bid process pursuant to Section 818B. Is it, should it be 818B or is it 818C? Can we double-check that?
We can double-check that, Madam Clerk.
Because I'm, yeah, I'm thinking it's 818C, but I'm not sure. And for the veterans, for the veteran council members, maybe you can, you know, tell me if I have it all wrong.
We could look into it and make the changes before we post it to the website for the public to review.
Right, and if it is 818C, then I would recommend looking at the other resolution that came after that, I believe, where it says 81AB, I believe it's 818C. And I can read what it says if it matters or if we just want to continue on with the meeting and we just revisit that later.
It's your choice. If it's 818C, we can make the proper adjustments.
Okay, so 81AB just states any purchase more than $2,000 but less than $6,000 requires that notice be given to the city council three days prior to purchase. So that really has, doesn't pertain to that, I don't believe. But 818C says in lieu of the contract bid process required by this section and in place of Section 821A, B and C of this charter, whenever federal, state, county or local government or any agency thereof whose purchasing policies are comparable to those of the city of Glen Arden has conducted a bid and blah, 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 blah. So in the interest of time, I'm thinking it's 818C, but I I will wait till next week.
No, we will change it to C.
Mr. President?
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, is the total, is the total contract $4,231, is that what it's saying?
You have to, are we on the same resolution?
Yeah. Line number 26.
Yes, 4231.
So you, I mean, according to the charter, anything under $2,000, anything under $6,000 does not require a resolution.
I believe the
Surprise notification to the council that that's what they're going to purchase.
I believe the mayor, and may you can correct me if I'm wrong, was going for the fact that it was a total of two, which put it over the $6,000, so
So each one is
I believe each one is $4,000.
What's the total down at the bottom?
41.
Madam Clerk, can you scroll down to line 41, please?
Okay, okay, yeah, I see it. Yeah, all right. I wasn't sure if it was one or two. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. I'm sorry. If you could stop sharing, Madam Clerk. Thanks, because I, sorry, Councilwoman Fareed, when she's sharing, it gets condensed, so I don't see it.
Okay, um, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Do we have a fleet management policy? Is there a purchasing policy around how to get these vehicles? And then are there any policies around equipping them? I just, I haven't seen anything like that and I'm just wondering if it would be helpful for us to have something like that. I don't know if what's being requested is standard. Like, I'm not really, I don't know enough about police vehicles, you know, but I'm wondering if there should be some sort of policy and guidance for how these vehicles are purchased and outfitted.
Acting Chief Jackson or Mayor Cross, do you want to comment?
Yes, good evening. How are you?
Good evening, good.
Okay, when we purchase the vehicles, they have to be outfitted with the in-car radios. Of course, the emergency equipment, the cages, and we could have cages in the cruisers. And then the decal. You know, the decals, they put the vehicles to stripes, the numbers of the vehicle, and the numbers on the top of roof and antennas for the radio and the computers.
So I'm sorry.
So my question is really, is this documented anywhere, like what's required each time a car is purchased? And I don't know if there's any options to lease the police vehicles or not. I'm just not familiar enough with it. I'm not challenging anything, I'm just curious. I'm predicting that in this four years, we'll need to buy some more, maybe.
Well, the equipment that we get is the standard equipment that all police cars are equipped with. You know, the emergency lights, the sirens, the radio, the computer stand, the computers. And the decals and the numbers that they, you know, the number of the cruisers that they put on there. And antennas for both radio and the in-car computer.
Okay, and so is that, so I think what Councilwoman Fareed is saying that it's all those, that list of things that stand there, is it written down somewhere? Or do we just know to do it every time?
It's just, it's just the standard procedures. You know, we do the, we get the invoices from the particular companies that does the outfitting of the vehicles. And then we, that's what we present to the council.
Okay.
For the resolution.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed, was that all? Or did you have?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Jones?
This information, Captain Jackson, is not written in the general orders either? Is it in the general orders for Prince George's County as to how to outfit a police vehicle?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen it in there. No, I haven't.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Herring?
Yes, Acting Chief Jackson. When you order these cars, it's a standard police package that's ordered. I know the chief would always talk about a standard police package that's ordered from the dealership.
Yes, it is.
And it's standard with what Prince George's County has and every other municipality orders through them, did correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
But it gave us, I know we normally get an invoice of everything that's included in that package. So that is somewhere on one of the many invoices that we have, the number of cars that we've purchased.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for the clarity, Acting Chief Jackson. That's helpful. And thank you, Mr. Herring, for providing additional light. Any other questions, comments by the council as it relates to these resolutions? Okay, we will make the necessary corrections and post them online for our citizens to review and then give the vote for next week. All right. Now we will move into this will come back up. Topics of the discussion. ARPA funds. So if you guys recall, we, the task was to, you know, to garner you know, feedback from the community as well as our ideas as it relates to ARPA funds and that we're going to use this work session to discuss it so that we can move forward with applying correctly the funds from ARPA to you know, help the city of Glen Arden. The funds were enacted to help municipalities who lost revenue during the pandemic. And it's a, you know, fairly broad range of opportunity for us to use it. In my opinion, some would say that it's narrow. But wanted to open the floor for that discussion with what the ideas that you guys have and how we can make it come to pass for the city. Anyone want to start? Nobody, I don't.
Um, yes, I think, I do think this is a very important topic. I'm just not sure if perhaps it would be better to have this in a, like a single topic meeting. I feel like what needs to be discussed for ARPA and all the different opportunities for it are so vast that you know, this plus all of the other agenda items we have, I don't know how much we would get through it. But I mean, I'm happy to start the conversation if you think that.
Yeah. So one of the things I don't want to do is keep on kicking this can down the road. You know, we have opportunities to to discuss very important topics. Now, unfortunately, all our meetings are going to be two hours. Sometimes to get the work done, it's going to be longer. I don't intend to spend three hours on the ARPA funds. But you know, the first step was to talk to our citizens, get ideas, combine it with ours and put forth some things that could really help push the city of Glen Arden forward and help us be in a better position. So I think it's fine that we discuss these things right now. If it gets longer than anticipated, then we can table it and move on and talk about it some more next week or the following week. But I think we have to move on this funding. So was that it, Councilwoman Fareed? Okay, well. Okay, well, um, if nobody else, uh, Ms. Ferguson?
You just want that suggestion?
So, the task which I, I've asked every council member to do is to um, to talk with your constituents. I'm pretty sure all of us have ideas, uh, and that we've talked to, you know, our neighbors and different residents of Glen Arden. And, and they've put input ideas and to bring it to the work session so that we can present it. Uh, and actually have some, some, you know, if you have been working on it, uh, some very detailed carved out plans for. For it, if anyone has been. Looking at that. So. One of the plans that um, or ideas that I had put forth was um. Uh, what some other municipalities are doing, um, so there are a lot of people in the city. Who are delinquent on their water bills, uh, as a result of uh, COVID. Um, people have lost their jobs, um, got behind on payments, uh, and I reached out. Uh, I've been in connection with uh, the water company. Uh, and the debt for the city of Glen Arden is four hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars combined. Um, and uh, Madam Clerk was so gracious enough to see how others implemented their uh. Their, their policy because other municipalities are doing it. Uh, the liaison from the water company has uh, been in contact with me and fully support. Use the funds, of course, because their bills get paid, um, for this particular purpose. Uh, and what other municipalities have done have, they've actually um, created a process where people apply. Um, with their water bills, uh, and fill out an application, um. And uh, then they submit the application and committee will review those applications and they are, they either approve or reject. Uh, now, the concern that I have is that the infrastructure of. You know, the city of Glen Arden to be able to do that, uh, I know Greenbelt is larger than us, um, I think, believe they have done it. Uh, but just how that will work, um, if we elected to do that in the city. Open to your feedback and comments as it relates to it. Councilman Jones?
I thought that we could uh, bring on a um, a person to manage the um. A person that would, what, would, would like manage the, the funds, I can't, I can't think of the name of the person, um, the, the title of the person. Right off right now, but I thought we was gonna, I thought we would bring somebody on that would guide us through and, and then uh. Um, give us, you know, the uh, ideas that, not necessarily ideas, but to manage the, the funds itself. Um, what do they call it? And then we would need also to bring on persons that would, would be able to do the part-time. Do this like a um, the um, intake, an intake person. To do the utilities, if we were gonna do the, the water, then we would have to bring on somebody, uh, two days a week, maybe part-time. To um, interview or, or uh, assess the uh, different, uh, the citizens. Or is it just like the, the W S S C has given us this figure with uh, the citizens? And we just give them the money and then they pay those, each of those citizens, or do citizens, the citizen would have to. Uh, go through a process before the, the funds were distributed.
The citizens, depending on the process we put in place, would have to apply. Uh, the funds wouldn't go directly to citizens, the city would actually pay uh, the water company.
Right, okay, okay, but then also, like I said, they were, in the opera fund, they also mentioned where we could hire a person to. Um, maybe Miss Lewis can help me with the, the title of that person. Um, to oversee, to get, and also give us guidance where we needed. As far as how to spend the funds and making sure that we, the, the, you know, that we did the uh. Follow the proper steps as far as the, the funds were concerned.
That's definitely an option, I'm open to it, um. I think one of the things and looking into it is, is making sure that, my hope is to make sure that we um. Spend as much money as we can, uh, on um, direct costs. Um, as opposed to indirect costs, if that makes sense. That's where the, the, the money is directly being spent for the city of Glen Arden. Um, not oppose this idea at all, I think it's a, it's a great idea, uh, just in examining the process. Making sure that we construct, you know, this, whoever this person is, that. We take into full account of, you know, the ratio of what's going to direct, what's going to indirect, if that makes sense to everyone. Uh, Ms. Fareed?
Um, yeah, so on that topic of direct and indirect. Um, I would like to look at some infrastructure projects, as you know, that the money can be used for um, building up. Some of the infrastructure in the city, um, my preference would be um, to invest some money. And I know that we would have to tally everything up, so it's, at this point, it's not really to say, not your idea versus other ideas. But um, my preference would be to really have the money, um, go towards uh, longer-term investments for the city. Um, I just get concerned that with uh, payments of like, uh, you know, people's bills of how long that would last. Um, you know, like if we, if we pay bills this month and they fall behind next month, and you know, we're kind of right back in the same situation. Versus really investing the money in infrastructure, whether it be um, building up departments or even focusing on the water infrastructure. Broad, broadband infrastructure, things that will have, um, you know, rewards and dividends for folks for generations to come. Um, so, you know, that's why I was kind of hoping we would be able to use the funds, and that's actually a lot of um. What I did receive back from citizens' comments of, around the use of the money was related to water, but the water infrastructure.
Uh, uh, Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes, um, so I agree with what Councilwoman Fareed just mentioned in regards to infrastructure. I do want to um, go back a little bit into one of your initial, to your initial question, Council President. Which was, what feedback did we hear, or what did I specifically heard from some residents? So one in particular um, suggestion was to um, focus on the gateway streets. Um, that um, pertains to when people are coming in or out of Glen, or going out of Glen Arden and making it like more so beautification. Um, similar to cities, um, like the city of Bowie and other places such as that, when you enter or exit. Um, another um, thing that came up were, was the streets and the sidewalks. And I know we, we spoke about this, I believe at a regular meeting or so ago, but um, utilizing some of the ARPA funds for streets and sidewalks. Um, another, and sorry, not just streets and sidewalks, but this also, I believe, when council, I believe it was Councilwoman Jones. Who talked about um, flooding of some street at one point and the children and water, I forget the gist of it. But again, utilizing um, utilizing the funds for that. Also got some feedback from um, small business owners, um, who are more so on the war one, war two. Side, um, looking at those who have been impacted um, from a payroll capacity. Similar to the um, PPP loan, I can paycheck protection program funds, doing something similar to that where they can apply for. Um, if the city has some type of grant and that same individual that you and Councilwoman Jones just spoke about. So in the interest of time, I'm not going to go into it, but that person could administer or, you know, supervise how. Funding for small businesses um, from the city can, can assist. Another thing um, pertains to the, and I'm sorry if I'm speaking fast, but I know that this is being recorded, so. Um, I apologize, um, the other, well, sorry, not sorry, I should say, um, another um, thing is, as we look at. Um, the war three section, the, the Woodmore Town Center of Glen Arden section of, of the city. Where we see a lot of growth, right, we see a lot of um, businesses that are still coming, which, you know, causes property values to go up. But it also causes property taxes to go up, so what ultimately happens is when you have certain populations of the city. Who are particularly in war one and war two, and some in the older side of war three. Some of them are on fixed incomes and they can't necessarily keep up with their um, property taxes going up. So similar to what you mentioned about the water bills, um, looking at something along those lines of property taxes. And lastly, and I promise I'll be quiet and give my colleagues an opportunity to, to, to share. Um, this goes more on, and this is more, I, I believe this would cause, this should have us working more with the administration, not this. This um, counting the other things when required, working with the administration, but this is more on the code enforcement side, similar to property taxes. Um, we don't want to criminalize poverty, and so there are a lot of people who are, for example, we have an aging population, seniors, for example. Who have homes that have been here since the sixties or, or even longer. And they want to rehab their homes, or they want to do certain things to their homes to be code compliant, but they can't afford it. Um, and so looking at ways where we can make code, code enforcement equitable by looking at ways. That we can probably offset some of their costs by utilizing some ARPA funds, so that's my list of.
Thank you, that was a great list. Uh, Councilman Ferguson?
Okay, um. Some of my list was the same, one, uh, these um, few were from citizens, some of them. Two, two of them say they wanted to see uh, maybe some security cameras. And in certain areas of the city, uh, especially where they're, you know, docking areas. Um. Also assisted to um, small businesses. And uh, streets and sidewalks repairs were also, the other thing that I thought about was um. We doing the council chambers, uh, to get it COVID ready, to make sure that it's up to code. As it pertains to the COVID and. And um, actually being able to um. Be equipped with our laptops, I mean, it's, it's kind of dated, and being that we are doing Zoom. That it would be um, in compliance with the um. Current technology, also um. Reimbursement to uh, for revenue loss to the goal room as a result of uh, being shut down because of COVID. And purchasing about six bicycles uh, for bike patrol. And training for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Alright, I've been writing some of this stuff down, um. As relates to um. You know, getting the council chambers ready, because I know that, you know, I've heard several citizens say they want us back in. Um, in uh, council chambers, and I know that it's the will of the council, we want to make sure that we do it uh, in a safe manner. Um, and the current construct of the chambers. Uh, we did have someone come in for um, just to see if it was feasible to get the plexiglass up. And the way it's currently set up, it's not feasible, so it goes to Ms. Ferguson, uh, Councilman Ferguson. Uh, your point of changing the outlay, uh, so that it can be COVID ready, uh, not only. Code ready from just where everyone's positioned, but also setting up the support there with mics and uh. Outlets for cameras and things like that, um, in addition, uh, Madam Clerk has done some network. In uh, just checking out the um. The cameras and the network uh, to display um. Our meetings, and she had a demo with a company called Swagit. Uh, Madam Clerk, have you had an opportunity to make a copy of this and send it to the council or no?
Uh, yes, I did, everyone has a copy in their inbox.
Okay, so if you guys, uh, when you have a chance, just um, grab it from your inbox and review it. I think it's uh, a pretty neat system, and if the council's willing to um, to sit through a demo. Um. With the council, I think that'll be great, just to see what it can do, uh, you know. Updated network, um, the ability to uh, live cast on uh, different streaming services, Facebook, YouTube. Um, you know. It's, it's a pretty thick packet, so that they do a lot, so when you have a moment, please check it out. Councilman Harry? I'm sorry, Councilman Harry, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm sorry, um. I mean, looking at the, the ARPA funds, it does have certain restrictions in it that you can use it for. So I'm, I'm just trying to, I mean, I mean, a lot of the ideas are good, but I do, they all fall under ARPA, I mean, all, all can fall out under ARPA. Um, I mean, over here in war one, I mean, we sit on springs. I think every house over here sits on springs, you know, and we got a spring that's been running for twenty years down at um. Tyler and Fist, it runs twenty-four seven, um, I mean, like, there's a serious water issue, stormwater management issue. Along Fitz now, since they redid the uh, Glenon Woods Elementary School, they actually paved over a big section of the uh, playground. So now the houses that run along Fitz, is the water's running down there, running down into their backyard, um. One citizen asked me to come step on the patio and air bubbles came up, so you notice the, the uh, cement patio is compromised. Um, one thing I would like to see also is I would like to see um. Basically a grant program for the HOAs, because normally HOAs are not entitled to the ARPA money. But um, since they are considered nonprofits, they, they, they can be, and I was just thinking that um, we need to set up a program. And like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and offer fifty thousand dollars to each HOA. They may have a pro, they may have a project that falls on the ARPA, they may not, um. But one thing I do think we need to do, and I have to agree with um, Councilman Fareed on this, we really need to have a separate meeting. We really need to invite the citizens out so we can really, really hear from them, because we're just talking to one or two people, but. This needs to be transparent to all citizens that didn't know exactly what's going on and what money we have. And what ideas and what we're talking about, because I mean, this is just the tip of the iceberg, and maybe other things that we may need to um, consider. And I think um, reaching out to the citizen, citizens as a whole, even if we, if we do a Zoom. Uh, we may want to do it in public and um, up at the um, in the gold room. But I think we really do need to have a meeting to be transparent to the citizens and let them know this money is here, because a lot of citizens I've talked to don't even know what it's about. Then I have to sit there and explain it to them, and you know, and then it's, you know, you can't give them the whole. Shabellenish or banging, you know, twenty, thirty minutes, um, so I just think we really need to do that. We really need to let the citizens know, this money is here, what do you, this is what we're looking at. Are you in line with it, since you have a list, you know, we can put that, we can put that before them, and see if they in agreement with it. Um, like I said, I mean, I mean, the issue that I'm looking at, along Fitz, I mean, a stormwater management issue of that magnitude is, is a lot of money. I know that we probably won't be able to address that issue because it's a major one, the spring on, the spring in the street probably can, because that's just tapping into the spring and diverting it to the sewer. We did that on, we did that in war three, so um. Yeah, I just think, I just think we really need to let the citizens know that this money is here and have a meeting so that they can come out. And, and, and a separate meeting so that we can discuss it and really get a good feel on what they really want. Um, you know, with the, with the mayor and the um, the council being present to hear and um. You know, being ready to ask, answer questions.
I think it's a, a, a great idea, um, having a public hearing. Um, so we can set one up. Uh, for sometime soon.
Okay.
Um. Advertise it so people can see it, and then people come out and speak on it.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, uh, but, yeah, so we, we can do that, we will do that. Again, the overall goal is to, to really move on, on this, um. Because we've, we've had this money for quite some time. So I just want to get the ball rolling on it. Everybody's going to have ideas. And so I think a public hearing will be great. Any other comments from the council? All right. Well, we will table the ARPA funds conversation and plan for a public hearing. So people can come and talk about it. And then we'll move forward from there. Next topic is the lobbying consultants. I believe everyone should have received a copy of the GS Proctor Associates packets that the mayor touched on, I think, a couple of weeks ago. Any comments, feedback? Sorry, Councilman Gilliam.
Yes, just in the interest of time, I wanted to say that I did review the proposal. And to me, I, I was impressed with what was presented. However, I do understand that we used them in the past, I believe. So I would love to hear from my, if that is the case, I would love to hear from our colleagues who, who are on council, who worked with them in the past, if there's things that wasn't covered in there. And that's not to necessarily, that's not to necessarily say I would like to hear it at this very second. I want to give everybody an opportunity. But just wanted to put that out there.
Are you talking about highlights that are, that are not captured in the document?
Was it a good experience? Was it not a good experience? You know, things like that. I'm sorry if I sounded short. I just hurt myself.
No, no, you're fine. I don't think you sounded short or anything. Mr. Harry?
Yeah, because I was the original council member that actually voted on them coming on board back in two thousand and I think it's two thousand five, two thousand six, something like that, two thousand eight, something like that. And they, I mean, since I've worked with them, they've done a good job. They've gotten the city close to a million dollars in, in grants and bond bill money from the state. They're well-liked at the state level. They're very, and they're strong lobbyists. They're pretty, they're very, they're pretty thorough. And I think we were one of the only few municipalities that they would do the grant writing for. So, I mean, the experience that I've had, because, you know, we got quite a bit of grant money under them, was, was really good. I think they're a good lobbying lobbyists and a strong lobbyist in Annapolis. Everybody knows them. They're very popular. So, I mean, I think, I think it'd be a good addition to the city government in the way of securing much-needed funding for our various projects. I mean, the more we can get in grant money, the less we have to worry about tax dollars having to, you know, touch our citizens. We can provide services through grants. You know, you need somebody in it that has the connections. They have the connection with all of the elected officials, you know, down there. So I just think, I think it's a good company to work with.
Do you understand, do you know why we stopped working with them?
No. I'm not sure why. I'm, I don't, I'm not sure why. I know we have, we have, we had, with them, we were doing a six-month contract. Because the legislature is in a session, it's only a session starting in January through March. So we always give like a month, we contract them a month or so ahead. And then they were worked through the legislature to secure the grants. And then after that, we have that law. I'm not sure why. I honestly don't know why we stopped working with them. I know one thing I, I do know with Mr., with GS Proctor and them, one thing, they always came to the city. It's like, what do you want us to do? You know, so they need to get the guidance from the city on what they want to do. But one thing they don't want is a whole bunch of, you know, administration saying one thing, council saying another. You know, they want everybody to be unified on this grant, because when they go down there to ask for a grant, they don't want a mayor or a council member calling down there to that elected official saying, we don't want the grant. You know, and that has happened before, because then the legislature basically says, we're not even going to put it in for you, because we're not going to go back and forth with you. If you, if you don't come as a unified body, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to deal with it. So, you know, it's up to us as, as, as a group to come to them unified with what we, what projects we want, what grants we want them to secure. So, I mean, I don't know what happened in the past. I don't, actually really don't know why we no longer have a contract with them.
Councilman Jones?
During my tenure as council president, it was brought to my attention by the former city manager, Timothy George, and he asked, as he was preparing the budget, what, what purpose, what, why were we paying $2,000 a month to a lobbyist? And and I, the, I didn't know it was $2,000 a month, but he showed me in the budget where we were paying $2,000 a month. The money had been set in the budget for them to get, it was something like, I think, $10,000 left in the budget for that line. They hadn't sent us a bill. Then when he started digging into it, all of a sudden we get a bill for the rest of the money that's, because he let them know that this, this, once you exhaust this money in the budget, there's going, there's not any more money. And then he was trying to get an idea of what it is, that what, what the scope of work is that they perform for the city. And he kind of asked me, and I said, well, I got invited to certain places if they had been carded and come to the country club out at Woodmore, and we would go there and sit down and talk with him. When they did the United Healthcare, came to the municipalities, you know, we went to that. And they also put in their scope of work, or not their scope of work, but their, something that they did about the Highway User Fund. Now, as I remember, when we got into, the Highway User Fund was cut off by the state. The municipalities, all twenty-seven of the municipalities wanted their highway user money back, because they used that highway user money for different things. So the Highway User Money issue came before PG-CMA. So, and going to the PG-CMA meetings every month, the PG-CMA decided to, that's Prince George's County Municipal League, decided to get together and go and present this to the attorney that was representing them for that to, to the senators and state house, to the state house during the legislative year. So they wanted all twenty-seven of the municipalities to come together to do this. And it was more so when we got, when we were awarded the money back through the municipal, to all the municipalities, it was because we did a collective effort together and went down. And the attorney for in Annapolis got us all to come to their office. We all got on a bus, and it was municipalities from Salisbury, from all over Maryland that came together collectively to get this highway user money back. So, I mean, I'm not, GS Proctor might have been in that, but I just remember us as municipalities coming together to restore this money back to the municipalities. So the, the issue with Mr., the prior city manager was, we're paying $2,000 a month for what? What, what is it that they were doing? I remember when I came on board that we were trying to get them to do some, to annex, to do some annexation. But for some reason, I think they stopped doing the annexation and Mayor Estes was involved in the annex. You know, and he had gotten another attorney that knew about land use to kind of look into that also, because they were trying to do some annexation. But other than that, I could not give Mr. George a, a, a clear answer on why we were paying them $2,000 a month. Especially during the time, during the COVID time, also that nobody was doing anything as far as, and it, and it wasn't like during the, the legislative year had stopped, because it's from January to March. And COVID started from March to September, even still through now. So I, I could not explain to him why we were paying them $2,000 a month. And I think if it's, if we're going to pay them $2,000 a month, I need a better understanding of what it is. I mean, if we have to come up with all of the ideas of what we do, I know that the, the, the police department was getting a grant. And they wrote their grant, but I don't know any other grants that were written by, that were done by GS Proctor in my tenure as council that would warrant us to pay them $2,000 a month.
Councilman Fareed, and then I'll go to Gilliam.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones, for that context. I mean, I think it sounds like it might just be a way, the way in which our contract with them is structured and our payment terms with them. If we're paying them just kind of like a retainer fee versus, you know, a fee for actual services delivered, I think that that's something that can be discussed and, you know, negotiated so that we're not just paying them if nothing is being done. But I think, like Councilwoman Gilliam said, the, it's impressive what they're, what they're, what, what they're offering. But I, I agree that we shouldn't just be paying, you know, just a set amount each month. We should be paying when we're actually engaging them to do something for us.
Councilman Gilliam?
Right. I don't want to be redundant to, Councilwoman Fareed just basically said some of what I was going to share. So I, I wanted to just, I guess, revisit what Councilwoman Jones just stated and what Councilwoman, I'm sorry, what Councilman Herring stated, which is in regards to the scope of work, you know. So hearing Councilman Herring, we have to be very clear with what our scope of work is going to be. Going with what Councilwoman Jones stated, Councilwoman Jones, at the time, was it up to the administration or was it up to the legislative body to give them their scope of work? Like, who do we know is responsible for that? And I guess that's where payment can come into play as well, with what the scope of work is.
See, that, that part right there was, was cloudy to me, because I remember us sitting in a conference room saying, you know, this is what we want to do annexation. And then the mayor was on board and the council was in the room. But for some reason, there was a breakdown. So that's something that as to who, how they did, who did, where they got their directive from.
Gotcha. So I think that they are qualified, so, so to, to end my comment on this, I think they are very qualified. They are very experienced. I think the onus will be on us, and I trust us and the, us meeting council and the administration to work together to provide a scope of work that would be deemed feasible for us to do the work. Should we move forward with them. So that's just my take on it, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gilliam. Mr. Harry, I'm gonna go back to Ms. Jones, and I'll come to you.
Just real quick, I just didn't, I, I don't, I don't see an attorney, yeah, I can put them on retainer, because we're always using them. But I, I don't see putting this, this company, this, this company on retainer, on a retainer basis. $2,000 a month is a lot of money for doing a, a grant here and a grant there.
Thank you, Councilman Harry.
Yeah, it's, you know, having worked with them is more than just a grant. It's them going down there lobbying our state senator and our delegate for funding that twenty-six other municipalities, a host of nonprofits and other organizations are lobbying for, you know, and because of their reputation and who they know down there, we tend to get a lot of the grants that we wanted. I mean, they got us the two grants for MLK, they got us a number of grants for they gave us a police safety grant. The issue with annexation, again, it comes down, it came down to the city. They needed information from the city, from our finance department. They needed to know, they needed addresses and assessed value of all the businesses on Almarwick Road and wherever else we were trying to annex. So that we could see what percentage of those owners we could get to annex into the city so we can pull the rest of them in. And they never got that. And they requested that information over and over again. I don't know how the previous administration got in the middle of it, because actually the council was actually the ones that were on board with moving forward with the annexation project. So that's what I'm saying. We, we gotta be on board and we gotta provide them with the information that they need to do these things. I, I, like I said, I mean, they've gotten us almost a million dollars in grants over the course of the years that they've, they've worked with us. But it always came down to what we want. The council can ask for grant money if the, if the council's on a project, the administration can ask them to work on their behalf. But no matter what we do, we need, the other group cannot go down there to the state and say, we're not going to support this, you know. So it comes down, comes down to communication between the two bodies in order to make sure that they go down there, because they're going to want to go down there lobbying on our behalf, you know, spending all of their political capital. And then we end up causing the grant to be either rejected or thrown back, because we're not unified as a body. So like I said, they're a great organization. I think they, I think they've done a lot of great work. The two thousand that they do, that they, that they spent, like I said before, we were doing, I don't know where it got to twenty-four, twenty, I mean, twelve months, we were only doing six months, because we knew after the session was over, we really didn't use them, we didn't utilize them. So I'm just saying, I mean, I think it's something we really need to look at. Again, it comes down to what you provide them, the information that you provide them, letting them know what you want is, 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 is the big, big, big detail in them being successful for the city of Glen Arden.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Cross, this was the packet that you provided. Do you have anything to add?
Sure. Thank you, Council President, and appreciate the conversation. I, I agree with Councilman Herring. We really have an asset in Proctor. What they have been able to do for the police force, much of what you see there, was because they actually was asked by Chief O'Donnell to find money for certain purchases, and he was able to find those. But it's bigger than just grants agreed. It is lobbying, it's client advocacy. Where if we need to go to the Maryland General Assembly for rational reason, if we want to talk to our state agencies, our representatives, they can set these things up. Even down to drafting legislation and amendments, we just finished talking about crafting an amendment that supports our HOAs for certain things that obviously there's not enough budget for. Road maintenance for the water, wastewater, stormwater management issue is going to exceed every HOA's budget. As we look across our city, it seems like our city was built on water. So these are things that they can help us with, that legislation and crafting, if you will, amendments that will allow funding to flow to those HOAs. As we look at testimonies before our senate, drafting position papers. So as much development is happening around our borders, if we want to take a position on something, one thing that we talked about last month was the position that we could have multifamily housing that literally covers both sides of seven oh four, MLK Parkway, Highway. So if we want to take a position and say, no, our residents have already said they don't want to look at the back of houses. They like their green space, but this is something that Proctor could be leveraged against to, to lobby on our behalf and actually help us draft the legislation to fight something like that. They do testimonies before the legislative committees. While many of us are in our positions as elected officials, most of us have a day job. Well, it will become their job to do that work on our behalf. So they are really good asset, and I would ask the council not to consider the amount that we pay, but twenty-five thousand total is what is being asked. And that's really cheap for someone that you can literally use in this capacity. Consider what we pay in our attorney, and we don't use our attorney every day, right? Development piece is another piece for economic development on the ground. As we look at evolving our community, the Wegmans, the Woodmore Town Center at Glen Arden, they could be used for that as well, for business development and consulting. So I, I think this is a real asset. We're getting a very high-quality company that Prince George's uses for many things. And they're coming to us for twenty-five thousand. That's cheap.
Just one quick question, are their contract terms only, you know, for a year? Do they do six-month contracts?
They do them for a year. So twenty-five thousand and then $2,000 a month is what's in the contract. But based on what we are trying to do, we have our Seventh Street. But, uh, based on what we are trying to do, uh, we have our Seventh Street, uh, Park, uh, they could start working that. They've already, uh, submitted some things to the police department to help them with grants as well.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm grateful for all that, um, they're able to do, I think the, um. You know, and we could take consensus at the council whether we want to move forward, but, uh, just listened to Councilman Herring. Um, you know, I heard an option from him of having, you know, a six-month option and with the. With the possibility of re-enact the contract if they did great work within the six months that we, um, have them, or go for the full year. But we could take sense of the council, whether we want to move forward as is, or do we want to go back and negotiate, uh, heard Councilman Fareed, uh. Talk about, uh, you know, something, uh, you correct from wrong, Councilman Fareed, on the hourly basis as opposed to just a retainer?
Um, it, well, actually, there's a, there's a trend now with professional services firms, I just know because I'm looking at this at work right now. There's a trend with professional services firms where they're actually, um, starting to charge not by the hour, like just a flat rate. But more so based on the value that they bring, so we might be able to look at, um, you know, some of that. Um, you know, the portion of, you know, like return on investment, um, they can, if they can demonstrate that they've done that for us. Then we would pay a certain set of fees, but I think, again, that will all be in the negotiation of the contract. I don't, for me personally, the question of whether or not their services are desirable for the city is answered. Um, it's more so how will we structure the payment terms?
Okay, so, should we just do a consensus of how many people want to move forward? So that we can, uh, I guess, uh, enter to negotiations and establish a contract? Uh, Madam Clerk, could you do a consensus? Roll call.
All right.
And, and just, I'm sorry, and just to be clear, this is a yes or no to go, uh, to move forward with the contract with them. And we can iron out whether it's half a year, year, or number of terms. Uh, uh, Councilwoman Jones, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, it's, this company, we've used this, the city has used this company before, but are, are there other companies out there? That, uh, we could get bids from to find out what other companies are offering in, in the way of their services?
Mayor Cross, were there other companies that, uh?
Have we reached out to other companies?
I, I recommend that we, uh, utilize the same, uh, rec- regulation that we used in purchasing the police equipment. That we'll utilize eight eighteen Charlie. Uh, this is a, um, unit that is used at. Now, federal, state, and county level. Um, they come with a reputation of success. We have ourselves used them, uh, the, this is, this is the offer that we make for the council. Um, again, I'm sure we can work with, uh, the financials, but, um, this is the most reputable company. Uh, I've had, uh, two others who have asked to, um. To be considered in this, and they're, they're not reputable enough in this, at this time.
Could you share who the other two were?
Not at this time, Council President, uh, I would ask if the council would consider a yes or no on considering, uh, the Proctor. Recommendation based on the reputation already with the city, uh, having given us, you know, over a million dollars worth of grants. Uh, that we have successfully used in the past. I haven't heard anyone say that they were disappointed with their use. Uh, when they worked, um, so if we could, uh, recommend to, at today's meeting. That we stay with the course of the agenda for Proctor.
I, I get it, and I, I think Proctor is a reputable firm, but, uh, Councilman Jones is asking the questions, he's well within a right to ask a question of, you know. Um, whether any other people out there that can do this, uh, not opposed to, to Councilman Jones asking that, it's actually her right to do that. Um, if that doesn't take us outside of the agenda, it's, it sticks within it. Uh, Ms. Jones, uh, Councilman Jones, are you good to go?
Uh, you can move forward.
Okay. Any other questions for Madam Clerk? Do a consensus of whether we should move forward or not? All right, Madam Clerk.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Fareed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gillian?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Herring?
Yes, to move forward with, uh, contract negotiations.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
No, because I believe that there should be, we should bid, bid this out, because we've had, yes, we've used them, they're reputable, but they're, uh, we've used them before. And we should be able to see other, what, what others offer in, in the way of, uh, a, a lobbyist firm. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Vice President Ferguson?
I would say yes, uh, with negotiations with the contract, and I do want to say for the record that I really, um. Feel some kind of way about the mayor, um, denying us, um, the other two, um. Companies, just to, to view it, not necessarily saying that we was gonna change it, but I, I don't, I didn't like that.
Thank you, um, President Curtis, please.
So, I, I'm gonna say yes with conditions that, um, we actually do. Uh, Mayor Cross, I think transparency is key. I like what Proctor Gamble, uh, offers, uh, Proctor Gamble. Uh, but yes, Proctor and Associates offer, and, and I think, um. Uh, uh, and yes, to move forward with them, but I would also like to see what else is out there, because I think that's, uh, uh, Councilman Jones brings up a valid point. What else is out there? Um, and so, yes, to enter to negotiations. Uh, but also, uh, Mayor Cross, for transparency, if you can, uh, send that to the council of, uh, the other two that reached out. I think that will go a long way, um, for transparency purpose, for us being on the same accord. Uh, especially that's gonna be needed when we want them to lobby on the heel for us, we're gonna have to be on the same team. Uh, not hiding any cards, so, um, if you could, Mayor Cross, uh.
Respectfully, not hiding cards, utilizing the Charter, Section eight eighteen, Contract Procedures.
Yeah, I understand, uh, this has nothing to do with, with the bidding process. Councilman, uh, Jones just asked, who else did we reach out to? I believe that the information, uh, from the administration side. Should be shared with, um, the legislative branch, because this is exactly what Councilman Herring was talking about. Us being on the same page and move forward together. Um, I don't think that is a big secret. Um, it could, when you tell us, it could be that we actually agree with you, that they aren't reputable, reputable. And we are a hundred percent on board with, um. GS Proctor, uh, but I, I do think that Councilman Jones and the council as a whole, uh, is entitled to at least know who those two other, uh, firms were.
Well, then I would hold that in close meeting relatively, because at this point, then you would have, you would open the city up to challenge. Uh, rights, which is the rights of this city to select whatever contractor the city so chooses, then that should be a closed meeting.
Just an email to the council is all that we need. Uh, you don't have to publicly say it here, all I'm asking is to email to the council. I don't think, you know, that will hurt anyone or anybody or open the city up to any challenge. Um, it's just information sharing within one city government body.
But that, that's an email, but not in a public forum, it has to be in a closed forum, where you ask the question is inappropriate.
It's not inappropriate, Mayor Cross, but we can agree to disagree. Um, she asked it. If you could send it via email, you don't have to respond in a public forum, just send it in the email. Um, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, if you look at the city's bidding process, whenever they've had some people bid for, for different jobs. We get all of the information as a council, and the information is public information, and who we select is who we select based upon. The criteria that we're given and what we're looking for. So the bidding process, when you get three bids, we get all of that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Respectfully, just submitted four, three, forgive me, four resolutions on behalf of the police department, none of which.
Mayor Cross, I don't, I don't think this is a, uh, I'm sorry, Ms., um, Jones, can you mute Ms. Gail Cooper, Cooper? Thank you. I don't want to go back and forth on this. This is a, this is a level one issue. It's just, uh, uh, revealing who the other two were. It's, it's no need to go back and forth. We're not obstructing anything, so let's just move forward with the next topic. Thank you. Uh, goal room. I can't remember who put this on the agenda, but, uh. Goal room?
Uh, I'll say something about that. Um, the, the goal room, uh, I think we as a council, and we'll have to do this, uh, one day. Sit down as a council and look at the rates and, and the things in the goal room. Uh, the, at, a couple of years ago, the, uh, I think, um. Councilmember Herring submitted a resolution to re- revise the goal room rates and different things that had to be done with the goal room. I submitted a resolution, had it re- revisited or rescinded, because I, I've wanted our legacy, uh. Organizations to be able to still have gratis, so we need to sit down and look at the goal room and figure out, um, as a council, the legislative body. Uh, what, uh, prices we're gonna charge and, um, the other things that, uh, pertain to the goal room.
Okay.
Um, and I will send all of the information from the previous, uh, when it was, uh, what was established first. What Mr. Herring established, and then the resend, so that you can all see that information, and then we can start thinking about what, uh, where we want to go as far as. Rates for the use of the goal room and what we need to do with it.
Okay, great. If you could send that, yes, please send that information over, uh, so that can be the homework of the council to come with the next work session. Once we get that information, uh, Councilwoman Jones, uh, to do our own research. Um, and, and Madam Clerk actually had a great idea as well, but it loops into everybody's idea of the infrastructure with the Aqua Funds. Um, and the opportunity that provides to, um, to charge a little bit more as it relates to the goal room. Cause, you know, it's no secret that GoPro hasn't made that much money in the past two years. Uh, but with the upgraded, uh, infrastructure, whether it be software capabilities, um. The goal room be able to offer more things that can bring in more revenue to the city, uh, that can benefit our, uh, citizens, so. Um, we can loop that in.
Yeah, but the, I'm sorry, but the basic, one of the basic needs of the goal room is the electrical, uh, needs to be upgraded.
Okay.
It's a basic need that needs to be done.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion on the goal room? Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Uh, council events? Uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Forgive me, on the goal room, Council President?
Mayor Cross, I'll, uh, come back to you. Um. Councilman Fareed?
Yes, this is the old agenda item, we, we, we discussed this at our, I don't remember which meeting, we discussed Council events.
Okay, so you're ready to move?
Well, because I didn't go with the, um, Charter, Charter Review Committee.
Okay, well, go ahead, Charter Review Committee.
Um, so, in looking at the Charter, uh, really from start to finish, there are some areas which seem to. Contradict themselves or to be inconsistent, um, and just some other areas that could be clarified. Um, with more, more detail so that it's more apparent what the action is for anyone reading it. So, um, Councilwoman Ferguson and myself were talking, and we thought it would be a good idea to, um. Put together a Charter Review Committee that just kind of takes the Charter section by section and looks at it. Identifies the areas that can either be, um, clarified more or areas where there are, um, contradictions. And, or inconsistencies and look to just kind of create a comprehensive list of those, um, areas. And then bring that forth to the council for us to, you know, decide how we want to resolve where there are conflicts. Um, and, and whether or not we want to do those, uh, language enhancements. Um, so we'd like to move forward with, um, putting together a committee, and the idea would be that that would be. Done with, um, some council members, but also some experts on charters, like, you know, our attorney. Um, and also representatives from MML. Um, my understanding is that we, in the past, worked with University of Maryland. To, you know, really look over our charter, that we would engage those people as well, to just help us make sure that, you know, our. Charter is fit for purpose moving forward.
Uh, and have you thought about the, um, the, the structure, do you want, I mean. Two council members, three council members, I mean.
Well, the objective would be to really get some work done, so we don't, we don't want the full council, um, on there. Two to three, I think, would be, um, adequate, um, and then, you know, working on recommendations from the. From our lawyer and from others on how many more people have, but again, the whole purpose of the review would be to just. Identify the areas, so it doesn't, it's not, it's not really a matter of opinion at this point, right? The, the, the committee would just be identifying what the issues are and then bringing them forward, so that as a body, we would discuss. You know, how we want to proceed with that, and then, of course, that brings room to allow for public comment. So this is just kind of a working committee, just to kind of identify what the areas are, and then bring that forth, so we can decide how we want to resolve those.
Councilman Herring?
Yes, um, I like to sit on that committee.
So then I think, oh, so then that would be four, cause now.
You want to do paper, rock, scissors? I'll just play. Um, okay, and so, the goal would be to do, take it section by section. So, will, if it's to take it section by section, then the committee will bring it back to the entire council, section by section? Or will they wait till they've, uh, completed all sections of the charter and bring it back?
All sections and then bringing it back, cause doing it, I mean, I, I know I was the one who said piece by piece, but I mean, literally us going through it. Because that's where you identified inconsistencies, right? You look at section one and you find out in section eight, there's something. That's related and potentially a conflict, so we would be looking at the whole thing comprehensively and then bringing for, forth the, um. Recommendations for action. Now, we wouldn't do it in piecemeal.
Okay, all right, um, great, and so I take it you have identified your three. I take it the sponsors, uh, Councilman Ferguson and Councilman Fareed and Councilman Herring has raised his hand. I think that's great, uh. Um, I mean, I, I'm not, I, I, I trust you guys, gonna do great work on there. Uh, I could take it that we're, you know, all in, in favor of this, and if you, you know, want a fourth councilman on there. Councilwoman Gillian, looks like she wants to raise her hand, but I'll leave it up to you guys, uh.
I'm not, I think if we add a fourth member, then we have to have it be like a public meeting.
Yeah, I get it, it's, it's, it would be, it would turn it into a public meeting, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Actually, actually, you may be able to do it, cause you're conferring with your attorney, so you may be able to close it. So, let's check that and see if that, we can do that. That's about we can take, cause you will be talking to your, we will be discussing stuff with your attorney.
Councilwoman Jones, I see you, you waving your hands.
Well, if we do it that way, we can have a fourth person, then we can have a fifth, cause I would like to do, work on that also.
Okay, just so long as everyone agrees with everything that I say, and then.
Uh, no. Uh, no.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with the three. I'll, I'll, I'll let you guys decide. You know, I know it's easier if.
You don't have to have public meetings, I understand.
Yeah. So I'll let you guys decide. I fully support it.
And certainly the council, just to, you know, let you, you will all have a chance to weigh in, so this is not, you know, the three making any decisions. It's just identifying them and the council fully weighing in on what we want to do with it.
Okay, all right, great. And then, after you finish with section, give it to the entire council as you move to the next session, and now, then we can prepare our questions and give feedback during the public meeting. I will take it. But, okay.
Yeah, we'll work out a cadence of how we'll indicate the changes. But again, I wouldn't want to take action on one section and then find out in a later section that if there's a conflict, so we'll work it out.
Okay.
But thank you for taking my time.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah, that was my comment, to make sure that we cross-reference what, you know, to make, ensure that we're not doing the same thing twice, or finding something that's going to contradict what needs to be done.
Exactly.
Okay. Mayor Cross said I was going to come back to you after we finish this. Well, I already moved on to a topic, and you raised your hand. Now your hand is gone, so.
I'm still here. Relative to the topic that you were just on, the administration would like to be a part of the review as well of the charter. Thank you for including, including us in that. Relative to the gold room, I will tell you that we have run out of space in our storage closets. There is tons of broken chairs and broken tables that we're keeping for unknown reasons, and I've talked to Ms. Duckworth about those. I believe that it is time for us to find a place to move those out of our facilities. We, we're running out of space in the headquarters, and we need to get those broken tables and chairs out. So I bring that before the council, because it's the expectation, if there is busted chairs that's not safe for our citizens to sit in, we need to get rid of those and make some space. And I'm welcome to walk you through that, Council President, let you see the space and just see how crammed it is.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. I don't, I don't think I need to see it. If you have something that you used to done on administrative side, you know, you know, prepare it and you can submit a proposal. I take it that if we're getting rid of stuff, we probably want to purchase new stuff, so. You know, I think that's, that's when you're sad to, to take inventory of that and to make the proper proposal, and, and then we can move forward from there. All right, I'm sorry, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, on that, just to be, just to follow proper protocol, anything that she wants to dispose of, she needs to present us, present the council with the inventory list, so we can actually vote to, vote on it as disposed. So we just want to make sure that nothing gets thrown away without following that proper protocol first.
Absolutely, thank you, Councilman Harry. You know, so, whenever you take that inventory, Mayor Cross, you know, let us know, and then we can, you know, vote to, to move forward. Any other questions on that? Elevator wheelchair accessibility. Accessibility.
Okay, that would have been me, but I didn't put down the, I guess it's, the accessibility is not for the sidewalks, for the elevator, because they called it that in several, in several documents, elevator ADA accessibility. The grant was taken out in 2006, Senate Bill 506 was awarded to the city of Glen Arden from 2006 until 2000, the last letter I received, 2015, they had sent a letter to former treasurer Alvin Bratton and former city manager Kenneth Jones, asking if the, you know, where, what the status was on the project, and if they hadn't received a status within 30 days, they would consider that the project was abandoned. I got, had the, went to the Maryland State House Library, talked to Annette Halderman. She researched from the state level that grant, which also showed that we received the amount, we were granted the amount of $150,000, and only, how much was used? $116,000, $10 was used, from what she's saying in her research, and the $33,990 remained, as of, that was the funds, as she said, puts into funds, were technically terminated seven years from 2006 to June 2001 to, to 2013. So I also had the acting treasurer, Mr. Stewart, to look, to do back research in our books. If he saw any designations where this money was still in our books, and he could not find any. So looking at the elevator information, and there's plenty of it. There was, it looks like there was an issue with whoever they chose to do the work, the Wilkins Company. That was never taken care of, but, but it looks like from what the librarian at the state house sent me, is there, that money was abandoned. And I don't believe that it should be in the city coffers at all, as a designation, that there's some elevator money, because there is none.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Mr. President, let me just say, the, actually, the money is in the city. The money was sent to the city, the balance of that money was sent to the city, and because they don't see it down there, doesn't mean it didn't come. Basically, what happened was, the vendor that went bankrupt was actually a recommendation from the state of Maryland. And that's why, and that's why they sent us the balance of that money. Mr. Bratton actually got it and deposited into the, into general funds, which he really should have kept track of it better. Also, what we did spend, when the company went bankrupt, we had floated a bond, so actually, we got reimbursed for that money that we did put out, which was like $57,000. So that came back to the city in the way of, through the bond that we floated for the work that was going to be done. So the money is actually here in the city. You know, where it's here, I do know it's here, and I actually, I'll show you the bond that we actually got, that we floated, because we wanted to ensure that this company wouldn't go bankrupt like the first one did. The first company actually went bankrupt too. So then the state of Maryland actually recommended this company, saying they were in good standing, here, use them. And then when we end up using them, as soon as we put our deposit down, they went bankrupt, you know, so. And so the state of Maryland actually sent us the balance of that grant, the $37,000, along with the 80, with, along with the $55,000 or $60,000 that we got back from, that we floated for the original construction of the, of the elevator. And let me just say, an incident happened the other day. What's today? Monday, Friday, Friday. Two gentlemen came up to the, to Glen Arden's, to the city hall to conduct business. One only had one leg, other gentleman was on oxygen, and they were trying to get in the building downstairs. They said, they didn't know where the bell was, so a citizen actually showed them where the bell was, and they're like, do we have to walk up the steps? And he's like, yes. He's like, they're like, we can't make it up the steps. So he, he had them walk all the way around to the building and show them the upper lot door, where they could get in up there. Now, I don't know, I don't know if they ever got in, I don't, I haven't heard whether they got in or not. But he had left them there, because he had actually had to catch the bus, he says, you know, you can get in this door, ring the bell. So my thing is just, I'm not, I'm still not understanding what this pushback is on this elevator. You know, that's a prime example of what I'm talking about, and if they really wanted to, they actually could go to the state, file a charge with the American Disabilities Act, go to the federal government, say, I can't get access to this building, it was raining, they were out there in the rain. So to do that much work, to say, don't build an elevator, is really, really bothersome to me as a person who represents the citizens in this community, whether you're disabled, especially with disabilities, because I'm very, I got some people in my family that's disabled, and it really bothers me that it'd be this much pushback on an elevator that's sorely needed, especially since the project has been worked on and the, and the plans have been drawn, and the plans have been approved by the architect that we had on, on board, you know. You know, is, is, as Ms. Jones said, $115 has already been spent on that, and that $115 involved the plans to actually build this elevator. So that's, is, I guess, is really troubling me, because when we got two seniors that can't even participate in their government, because they can't go up the steps, because one got one leg and one is on oxygen, and all of this information is brought up to why we shouldn't not build this elevator, even if we didn't have the money, the elevator should be built. Now, we're going to sit here and build, spend $100,000 downstairs on a, on a dais to upgrade that, but we're not going to spend $100,000 to put an elevator in. You know, we're going to spend federal money for, you know, other projects, but we're not going to spend money to put an elevator in our building, so people can, so people can actually, actually participate in their government. So I'm just saying all that to say, we need an elevator. I don't care what was found down at the state, I do know the money came back, I do know we floated a bond, because we insisted that, and do know the money came back to the city, you know. So I don't know what they, where it's back there, but it is back there, so, I mean, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Jones?
I just wanted to say, am I unmuted? Oh, yeah, I am. I, I just wanted to say this, please, please don't, Mr. Councilman Herring, please don't think that I don't want to have the elevator built. The only thing that we're, what I, what I was doing was looking for documentation for the monies that was, was supposedly entered into the city. That's all, that's all I'm looking for, so that if, if we, if the council and the administration does decide to go forth and, and, and build this elevator, that, you know, whatever monies that we need to put, bring together, we, we need to put those in the budget in order to do it. It's not, I don't have any, I don't have any issue with putting in the elevator, but we need to find out what happened with, or if there's any, from what the librarian at the state house is telling me, that, that she sent in this email, is that those, that $116,000 was spent. The $33,990 was sent back to the state, and the $56,000 that you speak of was used to pay Felder. I saw Sue Ellen Ferguson was involved in this, a couple of attorneys. The Wilkins Company got so much money, you bought, and they also bought permits for, for, to get it done. But here it is, this was started in 2006. Here it is, 2021. I'm not sure that anybody would, would use any of the drawings, or the, I mean, I have the drawings sitting here. If they would use the drawings, or we would have to start from scratch. We're just trying to figure out where this money is in the budget to, if, if this is what the city wants to do, if they want to put in the elevator. And then from looking at the plans for the elevator, the elevator was going to be on the side of the building, because they were going to build out part of the side of the building to put in a, a, a cage for the elevator. So it would have still been on a, a, a portion of the building. It's like where the gold room doors are to go in on the side. It would have been on that side of the building, from what I'm, from the plans that I'm looking at. So no, I'm not trying to, there's no pushback to have an elevator for the disabled. My mother, if she came up here, she would have to use an elevator. So what we're trying to do is trying to find out where the monies are, how they were spent, if there are any monies. Like I said, Mr. Stewart looked in the budget, he couldn't find anything pertaining to an elevator, other than the money that we say is, is in there. And then the state accounted for their money by pulling up that Senate Bill 506 that was started in 2006. Thank you.
Any other comments by councilmembers? You know, I, I'm also in agreement that we should have an elevator with the, I believe it was with the expungement fair. We had a few elderly people come, and it just highlighted the need for us to have something in the building for people who are disabled or elderly or, you know, can't do the walk around the building to get to where they need to go. I think the, the question is, do we do it in this building, or is there a larger strategy in this and having, because I know we talked about, the idea was floated of having a police station, and and I can't remember, so that it might have been a former mayor of just how deep repair, or we are in the current building, this will center, how many repairs needs, electrical, roofing, things like that. Do we want to, you know, have another municipal center, do we upgrade this municipal center? But I think overall, the goal is to get this, wherever we are, updated with the elevator for our disabled citizens and visitors. Okay. So next steps on there, because I don't want to just leave it there. Where do we go from here?
Council President, I don't know if this question is directed to you, or to maybe Councilwoman Jones, or even Councilman Herring, but do we know what, is there a cost attributed? I know since we, since, I hear 2006, so that's a long time ago, and even 2013, but is there, has there been a cost associated with what it would cost the city to fix this elevator, or to have an elevator, excuse me?
I think we would have to bring in our engineers, CP Johnson, and have the engineers look at that, the, the building, the structure, because I agree with, with Council President, that the building, it, the ventilation system in this building is, is way past, is, is, is time. You know, ventilation needs to be upgraded. But I would, before, to do anything, I would bring in an engineer and let them look in, again, and, and start, we would have to start from scratch. You know, just to get the plan, I mean, the things since from 2006, when you're dealing with buildings and, and structures, the, the specs change, the, the rules change, permitting changes, so. I mean, if it was maybe three years ago that we did this, and we were, three years ago, it would be, but 2006, we're going to have to, I believe we're going to have to start from scratch, and we'll need an engineer to come in and give us an assessment of what needs to be done to get an elevator.
And this may, this may possibly go into the public hearing meeting that was discussed about ARPA funds, but I, I can look also to see if something such as this can, you know, which I think it can be, funding can be utilized to do that, because it's for the citizens.
Mr. President?
Sorry, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, on, 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 on the, the drawings and the diagrams, the architectural drawings that were done are still good. I mean, in 2015, we revisited with the architects, and they were like, okay, the plans are still good. All we had to do was make the most updated modifications, you know, through depots requirements. So the plans are still good, and if they're not, you don't have to revisit it, I mean, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, because you just take those plans and get the architect, and they will move forward with whatever we need them to do. The plans are basically ready to go. Actually, when, in 2015, they had stamped them, so they were actually really ready to go. So it's just a matter of getting with the architect, Red Leaf Architects, who drew up the plans, we paid them for the plans, and had them review them. It's just that simple. I don't think the permitting process has changed that much, you know, especially for building of this, you know, like this, it isn't like it's MGM. You know, so I mean, this is, you don't have to start all, all the way back over, and I would not start all the way back over with an engineering firm, when you've already got architectural drawings that were drawn up and that were in the, at the stage of being stamped. That's just, it's just a matter of pulling the architects back in and seeing where you are with them, and what they need to do to modify them to today's permit requirements, and that's about it, and then move forward, find a builder to drop it in. Because the elevator is actually going a side door, and it's not about a gold room door, but actually, that little sunken area right beside the door downstairs, need to come out, come out upstairs. It's supposed to be a glass atrium, so people don't have to stand in the rain when they catch the elevator. That's why you have the enclosure.
I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm done, thanks.
Council Jones, do you want to take the lead on this? You know, examining the, this existing plans to see if we can move forward with it or not? Or just take the lead on this whole project, since you've done the, the lit work, to see the history of the grants and things like that?
Sure, I can call the, the architect that Mr. Herring speaks of, if their information, it should be on that, the drawing, and see if they're still in business, and see where we, where we need to go from here.
Okay, great, and so then we can have an update, just where we are, just preliminary work with the next work session, okay? All right, so we'll look forward to. Alright, so we'll look forward to hearing an update on, um, just. Um, whatever Councilwoman Jones, uh, finds out that relates to installing an elevator, um, to the municipal center. Uh, any other comments? Meeting sandwich boards. Uh, I think the council should have received. An email from Madam Clerk with all the markups of the signs that we'll be getting. I printed my stuff out, as you can see, um. And so it. The, the issue was the, um, one, what were we getting, what was missing? I believe Councilman Herring stated something like that, uh, and the total cost. Came to twelve thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So, uh, but we, we all agreed, uh, I think we're all in agreement that the current signs are in pretty bad shape. Uh, I've made it known to, to the mayor, um. Some of the signs that are put up were pretty unacceptable with misspelled words and, um, handwritten notes. Um, and we all want to get to a, a point where it's, you know, people can actually, you know. When they see the sandwich boards, can actually read the sandwich boards that, and obtain information on, uh, different meetings that we're having. Um, everybody have a chance to look at their packet? Any comments related to it? Uh, Mr. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, you said it's twelve thousand, you said twelve thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, I said twelve thousand one hundred.
Dictionary and a fat magic marker?
You know. This is what it costs. Uh, I believe we have music. Marama for all of our signage needs. Um, but open to the council's thoughts and comments. Councilwoman Jones?
I, I agree with Mr. Herring here about this twelve thousand dollars. That's a lot of money to put into some signs that, you know, uh, the existing ones. Uh, you know, if you look, get close up on them, you'll see that they got some issues. But I, I, I'm going to have to get a commitment from, from Public Works that they're going to ta- take better care of these signs. I mean, you just can't throw them on the back of the truck and, yeah, I mean. And just, you know, I mean, they have to be placed because everything is, I mean, to spend twelve thousand dollars. I can't, when do we, but when do we buy these signs? They're, they're not that old. To go back and have to spend twelve thousand dollars and still, some of those, uh, existing boards have like gouges in them where the screws were. You know. Um, and you'll. They'll probably need to know how to place them so that they'll, you know, put in their, their, install properly, that the, the signs that we're buying. Will be installed properly. And then the little clips, the, the clip that's on the bottom and the top, the little plastic encasement. Is going to have to be, uh. Reinstalled on some of them, so.
Where are they kept now? Anyone know?
Downstairs in, in a room, and, and as soon as you walk in the public works area. Uh, the garage side, not where they sit in the, in the office side of it. As soon as you walk in that door, they're all standing up, they're standing up there. But I think it's when we go pick them up, you know. I think we have, I don't know, I remember seeing more than twelve down there before, so. I, I'd need, I, I would like to see is the inventory of what we already have. You know, I, I know we need the signs. You know, but I could look at that tomorrow just to satisfy my own curiosity, because I think I've seen a bunch of signs down there, but. Not, not the placards, but just the, the board, the sandwich board itself, you know, I don't know how many we've bought.
I will say that. The sandwich boards are a reflection of the disrepair. That is public works. If we, if, if we talk about, uh, where the place, I think that's the valid point. Um, but it also highlights that. I mean. The space of public works is really in poor, poor conditions. And you can't expect any valuable piece of equipment to be kept there, um. And not think that's going to look like the conditions that. Department of Public Works is currently in.
Well, I think they've done a great job in, uh, cleaning out that garage, you know, they got a lot of stuff out, you know, let's, uh. Maybe they can store them in there, I'm not sure, uh, because there's a, there's a space where they have the two lawnmowers. And then on the other side, it's like open space, but I'm not sure if that needs to be corrected for water issues or whatever other issues it has. Before you can, uh, put them in there, you know, so that they'll be neatly lined up and not, you know, just. Going in there, I don't know.
Mr. Harry?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I have to do, I have to agree with Ms. Jones. It isn't the matter, this is how they store it downstairs. As a matter of fact. There's the fact of the matter that they take those signs and they throw them on the back of a pickup truck. And then they take the other one and throw it on top of it with no care, and it, it breaks the slats that the sign sign, I mean, slide in. So it's all about having pride in, in, in what you're doing and pride of, and, and, and maintain the city property. You know, because you don't have to throw them up there because you don't want to get them, you know? And that's what I see the problem is, is it's just the way they, it's just a mishandling, just getting them on and off the truck. Throwing them up there and, and just throwing them on that truck and just breaking up the slides on them. The slides that are the signs slide into, I mean, it's just, I think it's just irresponsible. You know, we pay a lot of money for those stuff, and we're going to pay twelve thousand dollars for signs, and they're going to do the same thing?
Is it, um, is it possible to, um. Hit Department of Public Works' budget every time they break the sign, uh, as a way to, um. I guess get them in line to not just toss things around, because I mean, if you, you know. If you have a budget and you break something, that throws off your budget. Now you can't get something that you wanted. Um, Councilman, Councilwoman Ferguson?
Um. Even if it hits the budget, it's still coming from the, 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 the city's budget, maybe need to hit their pockets. If they break, if they break something and the thing costs, um, a hundred dollars, then they need to pay for it. You know, because they, you know, this is not something new. And, um, I have actually. You know, drove past them when they was picking it up. I mean, literally, just picking it up and just throwing it in the back. I mean, I'm surprised they was, uh, you could use them the next time, um, but, um. Something, something definitely needs to be put in place, uh, written or something that they just can't keep going, because even if not again, we hit the budget. It's still money that's coming from the city of Illinois. So, I mean, they just have to take care, um. I said, I don't know.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson, acting, um. City Manager Jackson, uh, Mayor Cross, can one of you guys, uh, address? Uh, public works or how this process is and the accountability, um, for equipment?
Well, excuse me, I'll, uh, say something to them, but in actuality. You know, if they, if something, if city property gets damaged by an employee, they should be reporting it. And if they're not reporting it, then that's a violation. So I have to, uh, speak to, uh. Howard to let him know about those signs and the care and the upkeeping of them and how important it is for them to do that. And not just to sling them around and throw them on a truck. When they, when, uh, picking them up.
Thank you, sir. So. So the question still remains, um, do we move forward with this or not? Um, do we wait? Do we, I mean.
Uh, are you saying that some of those sandwich boards are damaged now and that they're not usable?
No, I think we, we only needed to purchase two more sandwich boards, because I believe there was theft. I'm sorry, three, uh, sandwich boards, uh, due to theft, I believe. Um, the, the slacks with the word, uh, with the wordings, um. The, that's the majority of, uh, the cost to make sure we have that in place. Um, so, but, uh, uh, that we currently do not have, which I think lends to the argument from. Uh, Councilman Jones, Ferguson, and Councilman Herring. That they have historically been broken because of the, the poor treatment by, uh, Public Works. Which is why we have to pay now for them. Alright, thank you, uh, Mr. Jackson. We can hear Monday Night Football in the background. Alright, so can we have a consensus on whether we want to move forward with this? I, I think we need it, I, I think, you know, um. Uh, I, I hear the argument, do you want to, do you want to wait on it? To something's in place, or do we want to move on it with the expectation that something is going to be on place? The Councilwoman Ferguson?
I think, um, we should move on it. I mean, it's a necessity. Uh, there are a lot of, um, new additions to the signs and inserts, and we have had, um. Citizens, uh, speak on how, um, happy the signs look, so, um, that was a request of a couple of, um. Citizens as well. And then we just deal with the handling of it, um.
So I'll do a consensus to move forward with it. Again, this is not a resolution to vote on it or anything, just consensus of whether to move forward, uh, given that is, um, twelve thousand dollars. Um, Ms. Jones? Yes, no?
I think we should move forward with it, but with the understanding that Public Works is going to have to do better with the signs than what they've been doing. I, I mean, really, I would wait until we got, uh, management in place so that they would be held accountable, so to help the. Employees and accountable, you know, to let them know that, you know, we can't just, um, be crazy with, uh, city equipment. But, uh, we need to move forward on this now, because it's like Councilwoman Ferguson said, there are citizens that want to see, see us do better. So I, I agree, we should move forward.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Harry?
Twelve thousand dollars, gee, uh. I mean, we do need them because it does represent the city and it goes in all of our interest ways, but. Uh, twelve thousand bucks, let me think, come back to me, please. I gotta think on this one. Let me put a little over my Bible and pray on it.
Alright, thank you, sir.
You can call me while I'm la- in the middle of my laughing, um, this is a very expensive consensus. But, um, presentation is key, and I'm a believer in that, so I will say yes. Since it's a consensus, not a vote, but yes.
Uh, Councilman Fareed?
No, I just feel like there's got to be another way for us to communicate the fact that we're having meetings. Uh, just aside from the fact that it's twelve thousand dollars, I just think sandwich boards is so antiquated, like. I, I definitely think we can do something better than, than that, and twelve thousand dollars is just too much for me, but.
Okay, uh, any, any suggestions on other ways? Or, or you could send it to us if you have any. Uh, Councilman Ferguson?
Yes.
And Councilman Curtis is, uh, yes, alright, um, so we'll just move forward with, um. Uh, getting things prepared, uh. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman, uh, Harry.
Yeah, one quick, where's the money coming from?
Yeah, well, good question. We'll have to look at the budget and last where it's coming from. This was just to move forward, uh, so we'll, we'll do all of that with the, the analysis.
Okay, yeah, I say yes.
Bible said yes.
The Bible said yes. Um, Council, um, Manharing, did you see the, um. Yeah, the, the printout of what we actually were getting?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, eighteen of each, um.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Alright.
Alright, um, I believe that was our last topic on the agenda. Uh, were there any other questions related to this, to the sandwich boards? No? Alright, any final comments, uh, concerns, Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry, sir, what did you say?
Any final, uh, comments or concerns before we close out the meeting?
Uh, no, this has been a very productive meeting. Thank you all, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for, uh, their cooperation on Shred Day. It was a great success. I really want to. Give a big shout out to, uh, uh, our council clerk, uh, Ms. Lewis and, um, Ms. Cheeks. Because, um, on Wednesday, I had gotten a call from our, the, uh, shred vendor that we normally use, and he's like, the truck broke down, we can't. Come out there to shred. What we can do is we can send your truck, everybody put their stuff on it, and we'll take it back to the plant to shred, and I just, I just wasn't filling it. So those two got on the phone on Friday and just called all over the place to find a truck to come out for Shred Day, that was shredded on site, so I really appreciate. Um, them doing that, and the council members that came out and helped with that, you know, um, so, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Gillian?
No comments. It was a very eventful Saturday, so. Um, kudos, following the footsteps of what Councilman Herring just mentioned, kudos. To the administration and to council and, and Public Works, um, I, I believe we saw Acting Chief. Um, rolling around when we were doing Grow Green with Pride, so kudos to, to, um, the city. We showed up and we showed out and Trunk a Treat as well, and, I mean, Lions and Tigers and Bears, oh my, everything was amazing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
Uh, I have nothing else to add, but the, the Saturday events were great. Everything was good, thank, why are you laughing at me?
I'm not laughing at you, I apologize.
Thank you, thank you so much for, uh, short meeting, too.
Uh, Councilwoman Ferguson?
I'm good, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, only last comment is this, I will, uh, poll the council or when they're available for a public hearing. Uh, again, the goal will just be sooner rather than later, um. So we can move quickly on the fund, so, I don't know, it's an extra meeting, uh, but I think it's a, a needed meeting that's highlighted by, uh. First by Councilwoman Fareed and again by, um, Councilman Harry, so, thank all the citizens for coming out. Apologies for going nine minutes over, uh, and we will see you next time. This meeting is now adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.